Yeah.
You know you can play down there?
Yeah.
Clay course.
They have a clay course.
And they have gas.
It's not that expensive either.
Yeah, I checked it out. I was gonna do it for you last year, but she wasn't that interested.
Yeah, they're not that expensive at all.
I'll do this year. I'll make you, but you go with them. I told him you guys should get together and do those UMass games in July.
They have them for long-term jobs.
Yeah. That's not bad.
But I thought, I think you can do better. Maybe try to raise your students.
Yeah, the students are slightly.
You might even be able to go during game days.
We'll sign off. We'll sign off on that. Total on that or something?
No, I know, I know.
Is somebody Al Becker again?
Yeah.
That one doesn't match with that.
That's right.
Eighteen five.
It is now seven o'clock, um, on October twenty fifth, two thousand and twelve, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to order if we can all stand to pledge allegiance to the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, um, just a moment of silence for Betty Moran, who is, was a, um, member of our district, um, family and her, the mother of, um, Pat Robinson, who is employed by the district. Thank you. First on the agenda is the introduction of members. We start with Mr. Tringali.
I'm Steve Tringali from Millville.
Erin Vanaco from Millville.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Sage Saint Amant, Blackstone.
Anna Francesa, Blackstone.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Mike Buckley, Blackstone.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Kim Shaverhood, Superintendent.
Okay, we also have, um, the consent agenda A, which is, um, warrants use of school facilities, field trips, and minutes. Were there any waiver requests?
No.
On the facilities? Field trips are the usual. I'd be looking for a motion to accept consent agenda A.
So move, Madam Sheen.
Motion by Mr. Buckley. Is there a second? Second, second by Mrs. Robinson. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
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 Um, next is consent agenda B, homeschooling. Mister and Mrs. Chad Estabrook, um, thirty eight Rocko Dry Blackstone to homeschool their child Dexter Estabrook, grade nine. I would be looking for a motion to accept consent agenda B.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? Um, second?
Second.
I guess now we would look in discussion. All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, public forum.
Are you gonna call for the names?
Oh, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. One opposed. Mr. Buckley. Um, public forum. Come on forward. This is Faulkner.
Hi, this is who I recommend this to me as Professor D'Alvo, and I have anything to ask you. How do you do? My name is Nick, and I'm a member of the AOK Club. This year, um, we will be hosting a fundraiser for, um, as a Zumba topic. And, um, that will be held at, on December fifth at six to eight P. M. And, um, we will be doing our Zumba from one si- one hour from six to seven P. M.
We will, um. I am with you. I'll go for the AOK Club, too. And from seven to eight, we will be offering pizza from Cora Sale and Rapples. You cannot yet go on.
I'm Megan. We are having this fundraiser to support a staff member's son who is our age and sick. Um, all the proceeds from the fundraiser will go to his family. We are inviting anyone who just gets ages nine and over to contribute to.
Now, we will pay five dollars to attend, but we challenge you to make a, to form a team of school committee members.
What is that?
We challenge you to make a team of school committee members to raise more money and pay a minimum of twenty dollars. And you'll be able to Zumba to one song on stage with a certified Zumba instructor.
Yes, that's right. Certified Zumba instructor. And, um, for a small donation, you put together a school committee team. We already have a master team. I'm working on the Millville team. Uh, Mrs. Harden's working on the Blackstone team. We got Mr. Duchamp, uh, and Mr. Johnson working on the high school team. Uh, and we gotta get somebody who works on the middle, middle school team. And then during the evening, for your small donation, we'll get you up there on the stage and actually Zumba and entertain us, the rest of the crowd at this place, um, and raise funds for the class. So we're, I'm gonna ask you to be the chair, the vice chair, Megan. Yeah?
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Faulkner.
Congratulations. Good choice.
Do we need a motion?
No.
It doesn't matter. I was out of here anyway.
Is he gonna be the choreographer also?
No, no, she'll.
Ah, okay.
Oh, wait a minute. I thought, I thought he was the certified Zumba instructor.
No, he's gonna make you guys on his team.
Um, okay, so I'm the team.
You're the team?
Chair. The team leader, which does, the captain, so I can choose who goes up and does the Zumba.
You need to get all of them to go up.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm there. Wha- what is it? Yeah, I'm, I'm there. I'm with you. I'm with you, Mr. uh, Mr. Faulkner. I'm sure Mr. Tringali will show me.
Faulkner gets up there, I'll get up.
I'm there. Well, I'm looking at our calendar. We don't have a meeting scheduled. Well, I think that you can't really, and I'm sure Ms. Ms. Vanaco, Mrs. Greenstein, and Mrs. Robinson will be joining us, and the vice chair as well.
And student representatives.
Student representatives.
Oh, yeah.
And I believe that, you know, because she is the leader of the school district, that we should take our lead from the superintendent.
Oh, Miss Shaverhood is gonna Zumba with us.
I think she needs to own group with the central office.
And Monique, I'm not putting, I'm not leaving you out of it either.
Suffer quiet over there, isn't she?
That is quite the challenge.
Yes, it is.
Can I ask a very important question before you all run away? Uh, what kind of pizza?
Any kind.
Well, here's some motivation.
Any other questions?
No, I also wanna, I'm, I'm sure my friend, Mr. Bebo there in the back row will be involved, and I'm sure some of his music aficionados will be, uh, will there, right? We'll put him right on the spot 'cause we're on TV, so. Great.
All right, well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
I look forward to this.
Thanks for coming. Go home and do your homework now.
Yes.
Not really excited, but. Student report, next.
Thank you.
The field hockey had their banquet tonight, and they lost their last game of the season, but they had a very good season, and they're all dedicated and they worked hard throughout the season. Um, today also, cross-country had their DVC championship. All the runners improved their times. And all the clubs have been really getting up and running and are doing lots of things. As winter sports start, the cancer club is hoping to have a raffle at all of the sports games. Um, Students Against Destructive Decisions are going to be going to the Blackstone and Millville Elementary Schools on Monday to teach students about Halloween safety. The yearbook is choosing their theme soon for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen year. And FBLA is selling superfan T-shirts for twenty dollars, and if students wear these to any home game, they will get free admission throughout the entire year, no matter if it's like basketball or volleyball, whatever, they can get free admission.
Today, the volleyball team had their last game. They finished the season off, I think, one and six, which isn't bad for a first-year program. This weekend, on Saturday, the marching band is gonna be in, I think, Lawrence, Mass for Nesba Championships, where we're hoping to win. The football team also has their senior game against Algonquin on Saturday morning at ten. And the soccer team had their final game against BBT today, where they lost, the boys soccer team, where they lost three to two. And the girls also played BBT, but I'm not sure of their score.
Um, can we get a report on how the bonfire went?
Oh, it's, the bonfire, we had a lot of people there. A lot of people from the community were there. It was a good event, and I think it's something that the school should continue because of the amount of people actually showed up. The senior class did concessions, and I wanna say we made around three hundred and fifty dollars off of the concessions, so it was a pretty good night overall.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The athletic director, Mr. Johnson, with an overview of the fall sports.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, it's been, as you know, a very exciting fall season, and, uh, I think magnified by all the, um, the social media we've been utilizing and, uh, just getting the community excited and, um, that being said, Jesse DeFauld helped me with a, uh, presentation that, uh, should be, uh, able to go. Let me see if I can.
There's a good one.
There you go.
The two thousand and twelve fall sports season has been an exciting time for the district. The athletic season began on August twentieth with football conditioning practice, and on August twenty-third, all other fall sports began tryouts. This year, we had an additional forty-five high school participants.
You guys wanna come back? Yeah.
Last year's fall numbers.
I'm over here.
Which brought the high school total participation to a hundred and thirty-three athletes, more than a fifty percent increase. In addition, we have eighty middle school athletes competing on our field hockey, soccer, and cross-country teams. The girls soccer team, led by new BMR coach Anthony Koski, has been very competitive in their games. They have big wins, including a three-zero win over Blackstone Valley Tech and two-two-one wins over Whitechapel Christian. They are now in a good position to make it to the tournament, which is never easy to do. The boys soccer team, led by second-year coach and BMR phys ed teacher Ryan Gordy, have played a number of hard-fought games that resulted in ties. The team had a big win over Homedale on homecoming day and recently over Whitechapel Christian. The boys are working hard toward another district tournament appearance. The middle school cross-country team has forty team members this year, and on October ninth hosted the thirty annual Hartnett Middle School Invitational, which hosted ten teams and three hundred and sixty runners participating on our three-year-olds' home courts. Team members will be competing in the DVC championship meet on October sixteen and will follow that up at the middle school state meet on November third in Tewksbury. The girls' cross-country team, led by new coach Bruno Nacilia, is struggling with high school numbers. There are a large number of middle school runners who have been making great improvements in their times. The girls are anticipating solid upcoming seasons as younger athletes continue in the sport. The boys' high school cross-country team, led by longtime cross-country coach and track coach Kevin Maloney, is a very young team and has finished the dual-year season with a three-three record. The team has traveled to a number of big invitationals where the boys have had outstanding performances. Over the next few years, Coach Maloney is confident that they will be a top-performing team in central Massachusetts. The first-ever BMR night game was a great time as our boys and girls varsity soccer teams took on the University Spartans under the lights on October seventeenth. It was a special day for both the girls and the boys soccer teams, particularly our senior girls, who played the last home game of their career as a night game on their own field. The fan support at the event exceeded my expectations as we had over six hundred in attendance. In addition, the event was not just a high school event, but a community event, as we invited the Blackstone Millville youth soccer organizations, U-ten and U-twelve girls, to walk hand in hand onto the field with our varsity girls in that scrimmage at halftime. A special thanks to Blackstone Police Chief Ross Assenpence for making this event possible. The field hockey team, led by BMR biology teacher Anna Carolis, has been working more and more as a team as the season progresses. There are quite a few younger girls that have promising abilities, and if they keep working hard and progressing the way they are, the field hockey team will be even stronger in upcoming years. The girls have been talking about going to camp together next summer as well. The addition of volleyball and football to the school's fall sports lineup has been a huge success. In many ways, these sports have not only added to school spirit and school pride, but they have brought the community together for these new and exciting events. Members of the girls' volleyball team and football team are proud to be part of these first-ever BMR sports. The girls' volleyball team, led by coach Vanessa Norman, has eighteen girls on the roster who are dedicated to the sport and improving their skills. The first-ever volleyball home match was a win for the team over the Chauvin Tech. This match brought over one hundred spectators in attendance, including many BMR students. We have consistently seen many BMR students come to watch the matches and support the girls. Of the eighteen girls on the volleyball roster, only two have previously participated in the fall sport. The first-ever BMR football program has also been a huge success. At our first-ever home game on September fifteenth, we had over six hundred and fifty people in attendance as the Chargers went on to beat the Knitmont Warriors. Band director Buddy Bebo was invited to the fifty-yard line to conduct the ceremonial coin toss, and the BMR marching bands performed at halftime. We have had huge turnouts at all of our football home games. Students from the district elementary schools and middle school have been invited to do a game coin tosses. The Blackstone Pack thirty-one forty-four Cub Scouts walked out to hold the American flag as the middle school choir sang the National Anthem on our homecoming day game. Our football team is led by head coach Anthony Naylin and assisted by Ryan Porter and Jermaine McKenzie. These coaches are effectively putting academics first and helping to improve the performance of their athletes in the classroom. The football roster is comprised of thirty-eight active players and five inactive players. Only one member of the football team previously played a fall sport. On Tuesday, October thirtieth, seniors from each of our teams will travel to the elementary schools to read to students and invite them to attend our sporting events. This event was a success during the winter season last year, and we look forward to the trip this fall. Congratulations, though, to all the BMR teams on what has been a very exciting fall season.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Very well done.
I've, I've watched it a few times. My kids are getting it soon now. Um, but, uh, it's been great. Jesse, uh, has videotaped or, or had someone videotape nearly all of our athletic events, and, uh, um, it's been great. I, I hear from the athletes. They really enjoy, um, going on and watching those games, and a lot of exciting things happening this fall. Um, the numbers for our teams have, have been, uh, you know, perfect in terms of what we planned for, uh, in terms of the, the new teams, the fo- fo- uh, football and volleyball. Um, but it's been a, a, a great fall, very exciting. I didn't know if you guys had any questions at all, or?
Yeah, I did. I just, one thing I wanted to comment on is that it's nice to see kids who otherwise would not have participated in a sport this fall who are out there. It sounds like the numbers are really good for those kids, so that's great. That's what we were hoping for.
Yeah, I did wanna highlight that. We, we, uh, only one on the football team had previously played a fall sport and two on the volleyball team.
Yeah, good. E- the other thing I noticed is, um, and we know this is a constant issue at some of our, um, some of our facilities, um, the condition of the soccer field looks like it's pretty rough. Um, a lot of activity out there this year. Um, how, how is everything holding up? I mean, there were concerns about football maybe potentially tearing up the field. That looks to be holding up pretty well, um, but I am concerned about the soccer fields.
Yeah, I did wanna mention a little bit about that. Uh, if, if you go walk onto the fields now, um, actually today, the boys' varsity team had their senior day game, and, uh, as I was walking onto the field, it, um, it is, it is in very, very poor condition. Um, it, I, um, last year, as, as you know, um, there was a lot of time and effort and resources put into the baseball fields. Um, the same group, uh, spearheaded by Chris McNamara, who has kind of, uh, organized a lot of it, um, has some great ideas for, uh, continuing work, um, on the fields, um, that would benefit, you know, more than just baseball. I did wanna mention, uh, wh- while I'm, while I'm talking about the fields, uh, we do wanna clear the brush around the rock. Uh, that, that was something that I think would be beneficial in a number of ways, including, uh, as the football team in the fall is practicing, you don't even know we have a football team because they're practicing behind the rock. It's, there's a lot of shrubs and, and trees. I think it would be great if we could clear that, and then we'd have a nice view of the back field, including right field of the softball field. Um, also, we do wanna cut back the, the trees a little bit more and put up, uh, a fence that would prevent soccer balls and baseballs from rolling down into the, the water. But the fields are in, the soccer field is in very poor condition, and, um, I'm gonna be working this year to, um, you know, propose a, a solution to that. The field hockey field is in outstanding condition. Um, and, uh, playing fo- you know, the football has only used that field for games, which is very helpful, and, you know, that's something that, um, i- is done in many schools. They have a game field and, and they practice in another area. It's worked out perfect this year. They go up there for their games, which has been five home games, and field hockey is still retaining it as their, you know, main practice and game facility, and, you know, the, um, I hear from a number of people that that field is, is, uh, one of the best that, you know, people have seen and play on. So that field is, um, is, is doing well, but the soccer field does need some work, for sure.
I just have one question. Um, is there a scoreboard for the soccer, soccer teams?
There, we have a portable scoreboard that, um, at the beginning of the fall, I give a, a schedule to all the varsity coaches, and they basically rotate through, so, um, you know, the boys' soccer team uses it, then the girls' soccer team, then field hockey and football. Um, the one problem is that if it's a rainy day or, you know, misting, they can't bring it onto the field because it's a, an electronic device, so there have been times when, uh, teams haven't used it, but they do have a rotating schedule to use it, you know.
I just, I've been to a few of the soccer games, and I haven't been able to find the score because I haven't seen a scoreboard, so I'm just wondering if that's, you know, a priority with, you know, budgeting for the following year, looking into possibly getting a scoreboard, you know?
Yes, yeah.
To utilize in the soccer, the boys and the girls. I mean, if we have one, one going around and there's three games, for instance, um, homecoming, that was one of the games I was at, and I didn't, couldn't find.
Right.
What the score was for the girls.
Right.
You know, it, I'm just wondering, is that a priority, or is that something that's gonna be, you know, on the lower part of the?
Yeah, to me, that's a huge priority. Uh, I've heard from a number of people how much they love that scoreboard, and honestly, it is, um, a bit of work for the teams to, to move it. It's a very heavy piece of equipment. Um, the fact that we use it for every home game on a rotating basis, there's a lot of wear and tear to it. I think it's very important that, um, we work to get a scoreboard not only up on the, the track field, but also for soccer, that can serve, uh, the sports that are played down there, too, but that's definitely, uh, one of the top of my priority list.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it is, um, you know, sizable. It's, it's a pretty big expense.
Any idea how much that was, Tim?
Yes, I, um, last year I got a, uh, a price for a s- a, a big system that had solar panels, so you wouldn't need to run electric to it. Um, that system was sixteen thousand dollars, but the range is pretty broad. Um, there's, there's many options, and we wouldn't have to, you know, maybe go that high if we chose a different option.
Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
I, I'd be interested in seeing some of those options that are available when you do come up with a proposal for, um, you know, how to budget for next year.
Yeah, sure.
We can certainly look at it, too, with the facilities.
Right.
I do think, um, that it, it is gonna be important, especially with, you know, events that we've had that have generated very, very big crowds. You know, people are looking at our facility and, um, you know, the field, the soccer field, and I really think it's, it's important for us to put some money into it and, um, you know, make it something that we, the district can be proud of. I think it's a, it's kind of a picture. You know, other schools, other towns come, and this is the, that's the picture they see of our school, even that they don't go into our buildings and see, um, what's going on in there, but they see our facilities, and I think, you know, it, moving, moving along, I think it would be great if we could, you know, work on that.
Anything else for Mr. Johnson? All right, thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're a little bit ahead of schedule. Um, next on the agenda is the high school department heads, um, with an overview of the courses that they offer, and I see some out there, so maybe we could get started and the others can, um, join us when they get here.
You want us all to come up?
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
So we put together a little bit of a slideshow, uh, that goes through the departments, and it's not swayed in the order that is on the agenda, uh, but I think we can throw the past, past the clicker down the line.
Before we start, why don't you guys introduce yourselves for the audience?
Hi, I'm Lisa Vivas, Department Head for in life.
I'm Ethan Rowe, the math department head.
Resurrection in honors department.
Mark Campo Piano, English.
Ellie Conrad, Science.
Paddy Bebo, Integrated Technology and Finance.
Thank you.
So thank you for having us. Uh, we appreciate you having the opportunity to speak to the school committee. Um, I'm gonna start off with math. Megan? Uh, yeah. So, uh, we put together just a slide of, these are the courses we offer. In mathematics, uh, we have CP level, advanced level, and honors level. I'm not gonna read all the courses to you, but just to give you an idea of what we offer. It's a pretty straightforward chart until they get to a senior year, um, where there are a couple of options. The state is now requiring that all students who go to a state college take four years of math, so one of the things we've been talking about is what other courses do you might wanna offer in the future, uh, so we'll talk about down the line.
Can you go back to that just a little bit? So, four is the, is the recommended, and if I looked across that spectrum, can you give me an idea of, just percentage-wise, how many percent are in the CP, advanced, and honors?
I would say, um, off the top of my head, it's probably about twenty-five to thirty percent CP, maybe twenty-five percent CP, um, sixty percent advanced, and fifteen percent honors. That's ballpark figures. It varies year to year.
So that student that is in the CP lane, uh, they are ready and prepared to meet the obligation of MCAS in, as sophomores with the CP, with the integrated math.
Right, so one of the things we did, I wanna say six years ago, or maybe right around there, uh, was created the integrated track to give a little more focus to those students who were struggling in math and a little more, um, I guess you could say, gear it a little tor- more towards the MCAS test. Uh, so that's the idea of that CP track.
And does that stay true right through, um, does that, that must trail off? What, do they need three to graduate?
Right, they need, they need three to graduate, and so we, we also offer the CP Algebra II, um, which is almost like a integrated III and CP Algebra II, combine Algebra II into two years for those students who, like I said, struggle a little bit, but need an Algebra II to get into a state school.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple other highlights from the math department. I just put the members up here, but, um, our MCAS update, uh, we have eighty-four percent of our students from last year scored either advanced or proficient, uh, on the spring MCAS. Um, our AP Calculus scores, uh, average score of four point seven out of five, which is, uh, we had an exceptional group of seniors in that class last year.
Along those same lines, Mr. Rowe, is, uh, can you tell me, how many, how many students do you have in AP that are taking the AP Calculus?
So last year, there were eight students in AP.
How many are this year?
This year is nine.
Yeah, is there any other math opportunities in AP other than just the calculus?
No.
Like statistics or anything?
That's one of the things that we've talked about. It's offering an AP Stats class also. So we have about, like I said, it ranges from about eight to fifteen in AP, and anywhere from, uh, this year, I think we have twenty-five to thirty taking an advanced. from, this year I think we have twenty-five to thirty taking an advanced calc, just a standard calculus.
Thank you.
A lot of teachers in the math department and in other departments are using technology to improve communication with students and parents. This isn't a great shot, but it's a, it's an image of a website called edmodo.com that we've been using. It's a way to post assignments, communicate with the students outside of class. They're able to ask questions there. There's a blog where teachers can post questions that students can respond to. And across the departments, I think you'll find that many of us are using this website. It's very user friendly, something we're comfortable with. And I've had a lot of success with it this year. So just wanted to throw that out there as a highlight. It's also a goal for, for many of us who had to set professional goals this year, to use Edmodo as a way to improve our communication with students and parents. Another highlight this year, we are, we did a, or we're running a mock election. You see a picture here of some students organizing and analyzing data that was, there was a student survey given out where they were, students were asked their political opinions and asked who they would vote for at this time if they could vote. And so, one of the classes, one of my math classes was in charge of tallying all this data and in the history department, they were doing a lot of discussion of the issues. This is just a sample of one of the graphs that the kids came up with. Another example of technology, this is in our physics class, using Vernier technology, which is motion detectors that allow us to analyze velocity and acceleration of different objects that we put in motion. So some students in labs, some students gathering data and collecting data. And this is one of our, this is our larger physics class in the lab. And then just a few courses that we're talking about, possibly running a personal finance class, maybe an AP Stats class. Another proposal would be like a finite math or logic class. And we're also talking about programming. So these are all things I think we need to gauge student interest. We can't run them all, obviously. And we need to try to figure out what other electives might be helpful for our students, might they be interested if they want that fourth year of math, so.
Now, the programming class, what would you be looking at?
I think C++. It's something we've taught in the past, which has been sort of an integrated technology department, but it's always been taught by a math teacher. So that's why I think we're
And then the math teacher retires.
Yeah, exactly. So, so that's all I have for math. I'm going to pass it on to English unless anybody has
Just, just one question.
Yeah.
Do you have any programs for the students who might be struggling in math? I, I see a lot of AP and the advanced, but I'm just wondering about the students who may not be achieving or may not be at that progressive level where they should be. Can you talk a little bit about what's provided for them?
We don't run any special courses, other than the, like I mentioned, the CP courses, which our goal, one of our goals with those classes is to keep those numbers lower, so there's more one-on-one attention. One of the things that guidance does, and they're not here to talk about it, but they usually sort of pick out those students who either were needs improvement or failing on previous MCAS and offer extra tutoring. That's not run by our department, but it's organized by them in both English and math. And they do after-school tutoring, either with a teacher or an outside person that's hired. That's one of those positions that's posted separately.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Campo in English. That button on the right is your, the computers.
Okay, these are our current offerings in English. Well, ninth and tenth, well, everyone's taking English every year of their four years at high school. With ninth and tenth, it's pretty structured. They either take the CP level or the advanced, depending on teacher recommendations from middle school and from ninth going into tenth. And then from there, they can branch off and have electives, still counts as their English, but we call them electives. We have a column of CP courses and advanced. And we also have AP English Lit and Comp, along with AP English Language and Comp. And we do those on alternating years. For example, this year I'm teaching the AP English Lit. Next year we'll go back to the language, last year was the language. Any questions about that? And just a list of our members of the department. This year we have two new members, Ms. Follin is in the upper right and Mr. Bostock, brand new teachers. And I guess Ethan's got my MCAS update there too. Ninety-five percent of sophomores scored proficient and advanced last year. Five percent needs improvement. We had no failures.
So you're good?
It's exciting.
Excellent.
We were happy. We still do a lot of acting, the old fashioned way. It's not all video. A lot of classes offer chances for kids to act parts of a play or even a novel, such things as the Scarlet Letter, Haunt of the Basketbills. That was a whodunit kind of a thing. They write their own skits, the one at the top, and then they act it out and the audience, the rest of the class, has to guess who did it. And in fact, there are video components to that kind of a project. And then they end with the live performance. We have grade nine, actually, this is one of my, one of my classes at the top in the lab this week. We're working on an essay. We start it in class. I model the writing through the smartboard in my class and then we moved the lab, block periods, nice for this, we moved the lab and they continue with their drafts that they started in class, modeling after the samples I used. I put samples up from previous years on the smartboard of actual student work. And we kind of dissect it, what's good about it, what's, what needs improvement. They work on their drafts and then we go and type questions up in the lab. The bottom is just a picture of kids peer editing their college essays. All teachers of juniors and seniors do college essay writing for their applications, the college applications. We help them out with that. And back to the ninth graders, we, around this time of year, we have contests among the classes making masks based on Romeo and Juliet. I know Mrs. Colahan takes it a step further and she has an actual capulet ball in her classroom where they dance and wear their masks and play music.
Oh, that's me. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hola. Buenas tardes.
Does anybody have any questions for the English department before we move on?
Just one question on the AP, Mark. Are there any, are there any plans or any proposals to expand the AP offerings on that, on that level, or are we just?
We haven't talked about expanding the actual AP, but we're talking a little bit about maybe tracking 10th graders, making an honors course, which would kind of be like a track toward the AP level.
Okay. How about like an integrated, like, say, you know, journalism has changed over the, over the last, especially the last decade or so. Any, anything in that area, like, you know, like, not only the printed word, but, you know, the electronic word, you know, like, whether it's, you know, news articles and that type of thing, like kind of that dynamic change that we've seen?
Amy Keller teaches that this year. It's her first time teaching it and she does a lot of the online newspapers with the kids in the lab. She'll bring them and, and bring up the Boston Globe or whatever. And from there, they, they write their own articles. They're having a mini newspaper printed this year in class, working with Mr. Juva.
Okay.
And they have, it's still a textbook, kind of workbook.
Good.
Just great job on the MCAS.
Thanks.
We were impressed with the scores.
Hello. This is our course log and chart here. As you can see, we offer CP level, advanced level, CP Spanish and advanced Spanish and French advanced. There's only one of me, so to offer a CP French would be very difficult because there's just one of me and I can only teach four classes. Right now, Mrs. Waterman's teaching a, a French one for me as well. I've got two French ones. I've got forty-two students signed up for French one this year, so that's a good amount. As you know, we have a two-year language requirement at the high school for graduation. Students take a minimum of two years. We encourage them to go on, many do. We currently have a, an advanced three Spanish class of twenty-five, advanced French three of fifteen. And we have a Spanish four honors of nineteen and a French four honors of thirteen. But we start off very, very strong. The Spanish CP classes are many more than the advanced, unfortunately. In an effort to place incoming ninth graders into the correct language level, I will look at these signups for English for ninth graders and I try to match up. If they are signed up for an advanced English, the likelihood is that the language will be an advanced language because they're strong in that area. There are times, however, that students will be misplaced, not misplaced, malplaced, I don't know the word. And we'll watch for that. And if a student is strong and is in a CP level, we will move him or her to an advanced level. Because as you can see, the advanced levels go on to the honors level. We also have it working the other way, where if a student is in a little over his or her head in the advanced, we will recommend that they move to a CP level. And that is usually done through guidance and through contacting parents. I usually take care of that part of it. So we do work together with guidance to ensure that the child is placed properly in the language level. Any questions?
I'm just wondering, I, any talk of Chinese? I know that a lot of school districts offer Chinese.
Well, Shabu just mentioned that the other day, it'd be something about Chinese. No, not to me. Not to me. Would you like to speak Chinese?
I know a lot of districts are offering something like that. That's obviously a most widely spoken language in the world, so we should consider it.
It's a little out of my realm, but I didn't
A little bit out of my control.
Before we move on from that?
Sure.
If we look at this here, now, we've reinstated Spanish I in the eighth grade.
Yes.
So will freshmen be, have the opportunity to move to Spanish II?
I wish. The, the current Spanish program at the middle school, I just, we were emailing today back and forth, Meredith and the French teacher. It's a semester course for the eighth grade, correct? Yes.
The Spanish is?
This year.
Okay.
Next year it's expanding.
So would they be eligible, well, I suppose they would be ready for Spanish II?
Not quite ready.
So is there any chance of modifying, you know, this, this grid to manage that for the kids that maybe have a bit of a head start so that they're not going back?
Well, I really feel they need a full year completed before they come into the second year, the second level.
I understand that, but is there any way that we can, the advanced Spanish, in other words, can we, would those kids that took this, this one semester, would they be targeted for the advanced Spanish?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably, yes. I believe you have, there are twenty, there are good numbers in there too. Meredith Tochi has two, two full Spanish classes, I believe, like twenty-five per class. And Gary, I think, has twenty-five as well in French.
And that's in the French class.
So I'm, we're thrilled about this. We're thrilled. I mean, ideally, it'd be nice to have a full year offered in eighth grade, ideally. We're thrilled to have what we have, believe me, so that we could offer, have the kids go right into a French or Spanish II in ninth grade and bring them up to an AP level. Both Lynn Gomes and I are both AP certified. We've had training at St. John's, we both taught AP. She just finished last year with a group.
So she ran AP last year, but is there any, is there any running this year?
Running this year, but as an independent study.
Is there any running this year?
Just two, two.
Two, two this year?
Yeah, independent study.
Thank you.
This is our department. Let's see, Lynn is in her twelfth year at BMR High School. I'm in my eighteenth year, I can't believe it, eighteenth year there, twenty-four teaching. Kathleen Waterman is in her twelfth year and Mary Caron is in her seventh year, and I thought she was a baby, but she's not anymore. We have younger, younger people coming in. Here we have students using technology. Each foreign language department member has a smartboard and we use it regularly. Student engagement is much greater when technology is used as an alternate means of presenting a lesson. We use the smartboard for PowerPoint presentations, interactive activities, and to show video clips. Kids love the interaction, interaction with the technology and they love competitions. We are thrilled. We are thrilled. I'm sure you are too. We are, I'm telling you, we couldn't be more excited about the YouTube access. This particular clip you see is called, you can't really read it well, but it's in my classroom, Le Cobre et le Renard, and it's The Fox and the Crow, The Crow and the Fox, written by Jean de la Fontaine, a seventeenth century French author who wrote for Louis XIV. Anyway, my, my kids have to learn fables by heart and they, they memorize them and know what they're about. And I found this great clip on YouTube and it, it just brings the whole fable to life. They're hearing me all the time, but they're hearing other speakers too. And I'll tell you, it just has, I can't tell you how excited I am about having access to YouTube, especially all of you, but in foreign language especially, it just, there's this wealth of, of stuff out there for all of us. Our upper level classes do digital voice recordings as part of our curricula, curricula being French and Spanish together. Students are, for example, assigned a topic and must respond to open-ended questions in the target language. Student recorders, recordings are then uploaded into our K-drives. They can also be transferred into MP3 files. The digital recorders were acquired through the BMEF grant program. We're very happy to receive them. And here is, unfortunately, I don't, I, that little dot up there was, the little microphone was my sample, you were all going to hear, but we found out it wouldn't play here, so. But it's one of our students speaking beautifully, just, you might know, Ally Malang, who graduated last year. And they do these recordings regularly as part of our curriculum. And they, we, we start them off where they can, they can read a little bit and have notes and then after that, they're given a note, a question, and it's go record. And they've got to put it together. It's really, they do reach a point of proficiency, by the fourth year especially, to tie it all together. I chose The Little Prince because my particular recording and that scene is about the fox's secret. I don't know if you know the story. But what's essential is invisible to the eye. And I asked the kids their opinions about that. We are using blogs, Lynn and I are using blogs. This is her Spanish blog, thanks to Joanne Arquette, who taught us how to do it. Wonderful, it's a wonderful, interactive way to work with students. This happens to be EduBlogs, I don't know if you've heard of EduBlogs. This is a site created by the teacher, or not the actual site, but the material on it, where students develop and display their reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills. Here are two blogs we have created. This is Lynn, Lynn Gomes, this is my blog, Parlez-moi, Speak to Me. I'll assign a topic, open-ended question. As you can see, La Paris me is the necklace, you probably read The Necklace in English class. Well, it was written by Guy de Montfasson, a Frenchman, guys. Well, it was written by Guy de Montfasson, a Frenchman, guys. And then the student will comment, that happens to be my niece, Emma Bebo, graduated last year, and this is one of her, one of her writings. Edgiblogs is another tool we use to pique student interest and encourage teacher-student interaction beyond the classroom. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Sounds like a great program.
Thank you.
It really does.
We're proud of it.
Nicely put.
Thank you, we work hard, we're proud of it.
I have one question.
Sure.
In terms of your particular professional development, when there is professional development, what is it that you go to? Because I, I saw your blogs and I saw the things that people were teaching you to do, and I'm assuming that wasn't during a professional development, it was more during your time?
Right, no, that was on our own time.
Right, so I'm just curious on, what does your department do during your professional development?
We attended the BYOD, Bring Your Own Device, which was at PBT the other day, which was We also have done collaborative work with the, the area schools, with foreign language teachers getting together and sharing ideas, which we really do love. It's a great way to just share teaching strategies and that kind of thing.
Would you find it beneficial to have a professional development on that, like blog site?
Absolutely.
Or how to do something like that?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, for the social studies department, we have following course offerings, US One, US Two, World History, Psychology, Sociology, Modern History, Street Law, History of Pop and Culture, and we have AP US History. Future courses that we thought about included perhaps an AP Psych or Psychology Two, and also incorporating a US Three, more detailed and depth course of, of modern items. Our department includes myself, Mr. McCormick, John McCormick, Ms. Stephanie Anderson, Ms. Carol Conti, and Mr. Mark DeWolf. I do have to stop and give credit to Ms. Conti because she's the one that's at the forefront along with Ethan with the election. She came to me and said, I really like to do a mock election, I like to go through the process of having kids actually register to vote, be able to cast a ballot, go through the whole process, maybe learn some issues. And Ethan's department was kind of, they jump on board, and hey, we can do some graphing stuff. So it's a great cross-curricular activity, and Carol Conti's really at the forefront of that, and I said, go for it. So that is really kind of her brainchild along with Ethan.
Just to add to that, one thing we decided to do was to make an electoral college format, so the number of votes that actually will go to each candidate will be based on the number of people in either their homeroom. So the larger homerooms actually get more electoral votes. So the kids will get an idea of it's not necessarily the most votes wins. So that's something that Carol and I are trying to work the details out.
And that's, and that's a great concept that I'm trying to understand.
Where are the battlegrounds, Mr. Rowe?
It's yet to be determined.
Most, actually, all of my department is using some type of either School Notes, X Two, or the eModo. This is an example of School Notes, it's very similar to eModo, and basically, we use it to communicate with students, discuss projects, let them know what's coming up, homework, quizzes, tests. On this one, I use a blog, I know some of my other folks are starting to use blogs as well, and it is a great device, kind of a way to get them involved at home. And this is one, I know I got cut off a little bit at the top, but they were asked to answer three reasons why the United States became involved in World War I. Did these reasons justify the US entering the war, or was the war really none of our business? And that's kind of going back to where we're talking about isolation of the United States. Did we want to stay isolated, did we not? And students have the opportunity to kind of answer along their lines and get credit for it, and kind of express themselves in an open response format. I did another one the other day where I did it in class, kind of experiment, passed it on to my department, and they may jump on it. We actually did one in-class time in which I posted a question, they answered it in kind of real time, so to speak, and then other students had to respond to at least two blogs of students that put up. So we kind of had a running blog going at that time, so they were answering, reading, responding, reacting at that time. So it was kind of a class discussion electronically. And it seemed to work out, we probably got about half an hour, we got about sixty-eight, about seventy blogs posted, or basically sixty-eight to seventy student responses in about a half an hour. So it was, it was interesting to, to see them work at that. Another item that we're using, I know the ELA department is as well, is, this is a database that we are experimenting with this year, and this database is available to us through the library, but it is one that I know my department is excited about. It's kind of a lot of firsthand archives and firsthand pieces that we can work with to give students kind of a taste of what it was like at that time, what people were thinking at that time. And there are some exciting options. If you look over to, would be your right-hand side, they have the analyze, and they have a lot of kind of thought-provoking questions, and from there, we can have them write kind of a convincing essay, pick a side and tell us which one. One of the ones that you can see is prohibition, which were in the twenties, but another one that's coming up is dropping the bomb on Hiroshima and Nagasaki, was the United States justified? Kind of looking at both sides of the story and having them make a determination based on factual evidence. So it's a pretty good resource, one that we're trying to get out and use, there's a lot of resources there that we can explore, and that's kind of where we are at this point. Some goals and events we have, the mock election will obviously be wrapping up in a few weeks. One thing that our department decided to focus on as, as a universal goal for the department was to improve the writing. We, we are very proud that we have a hundred percent passing rate at the MCAS test for our department, because we don't have one, but we're at a hundred percent. But one of the things that we know that we have to do is kind of support others in terms of writing, and that was always in the area, and I know ELA is focused on that. And so what we did is, we determined that this year that we were going to minimum have seventy-five percent of all of our students get at least seventy-five percent of the points they could earn on all of their essays. And if they could not do that, then we've given the opportunity to do that. Just kind of a way to say, listen, this is really an important skill we need to focus on. And what we have started to develop in our PLCs is we have actually started to develop outlines that we will distribute for every big five paragraph essay, we can even use it for open response questions. And we're also developing a rubric that we have had in the past, we're kind of narrowing down our focus to get to that point where it's, okay, what's the meat, what is going to get you seventy-five percent? Just another way to help the students along. So that's something we're excited about, we're working on it, and the students are working with us, so hopefully, we're going to get to that goal, but that's one that the entire department has shared. So, and that is, I believe, the end for me.
Over here.
Yes, any questions?
Me again. On the blogs that you have written, I'm familiar with the blogs, do you look at just content when they're writing those blogs, or are you looking at the writing as well? Because I know in the age of texting and everything else, it can kind of get...
Generally speaking, at this point, what we're doing, or at least I know what I'm doing, is I'm looking for them to interactively participate with me and show me some understanding of what the concepts are that we taught in class. One of them, which you may or may not have caught, one was written beautifully, the other one had some grammatical and spelling errors. Those are, to get back to your original question, mostly content is what I'm looking for. They have been told that we are not looking for, I will not accept, kind of the texties that they like. But in terms of grammar and spelling, if they're on the right track, then I'll kind of make a comment to them going, you may just want to check that, or, you know, spell check that before, or put it into a Word document, check it out first, then post it. But usually, it's the content that we're looking for.
Now, have there been any issues with blogging at home and not being able to have a device in terms of having a blog, or are you doing most of that at the school?
There is, and what I will do is I will post the blog question, and those that have the account, and they're all signed up to my account, so I can send them out an email, it'll notify all of them, and then they can respond from there. For those that do not have that, I get a, a copy of the blog, and I will hand it out to them so that they can actually go home, write it out, hand it in, still get the same opportunity. Though the, they don't have the ability to see other students work as much as others, they at least get the opportunity to participate and kind of show me what they kind of understood or learned from the lesson.
And all the teachers are blogging in your department, or?
I know that they are on their way.
Or techno, you know, doing some type of technology?
I, I know they're all using the, the pages to communicate, and I can check on that. I know that it's something that I brought up and said, this is what we're doing, and they've gone, oh, that's a good idea, so.
But the blogging is done usually during your time? Not a professional development, like learning?
No. We discuss it during PLC time, but in terms of professional development, no.
Okay, thank you.
This is me, that's up next. Well, these are course offerings that we have during school day. Concert band, wind ensemble, chorus, music theory, music technology, with the last two being semester courses. Wind ensemble is an audition process to get into that group. Both concert band and wind ensemble are also assessed on a state level, we always make sure we go to state-level competitions and get assessed outside the, the district as well. Not for our grading policy, just for our personal, where are we at, and for the enjoyment of performing. The three performing groups all have the same amount of concerts, three or four a year, depending on the situation. Music theory class and music technology classes, we were looking for classes that we could open up to the general body, school general body, and that, that's the area that we could do that. We are restricted to class size because of just the available space in, in the areas that we have. We also, with the music theory class, we've gone away from textbooks, we are doing it all online now, and so we don't order any more books and anything like that. And it's pretty, I can do it right off the laptop, and we get overhead in the class, and it works out pretty good. Technology, we take the music that we learn in music theory, put it on the computers, and have it played back and stuff like that. That's what we, we basically do in those areas. In art, we have foundations in art.
Before you get off that one?
Yep.
Chorus, yeah, one time, a long time ago, they used to have like the madrigal singers, it was more of an advanced group. Any, any plans on anything like that?
We, at this particular time, we're still in a redevelopment stage, we lost chorus for many years.
Right.
As you know, we're bringing it back, and we're still, the feeder program is still in flux a little bit. So right now, it's still working, I, I teach chorus now, and I'm enjoying it a lot, but it's still in the development stage. It's an offering that our kids wanted, and we, we made sure we could get it back. But it is not, it's not one of those, we would take the chorus to a competitive situation, because we're still in development stage. We're still, we're still headed in that way.
Okay, thanks.
That's where, that's where our course. Any other music questions before I move on? I know too many have tonight. In the art department, Christine Robertson's been with us for a while. Foundations in art, drawing beyond drawing, experimental painting, ceramics, which is the entry level, and then a basic pottery. As you notice, once again, CP, more courses, CP courses than full-year courses, I mean, not that one, CP then advanced, and fortunately, in that, that area, we have quite a few full, full-year courses. With hands-on projects like that, it's good to have a continuation. The other thing in both departments, and I would say technology as well, sometimes we can't get to all students, and some students are interested in going on to the college level, so we have independent studies, where the kids would come into a class that we're already teaching, and we give them separate things, so we can service the student that, you know, one or two students that might want to go on in that profession. That's how we deal with, with those. Any, any questions on that particular area? This is an interesting one. If you, if you look on the far right-hand side, you'll notice, I think this was developed many years, Mike, you might know the history of this more than I, all the semester classes compared to full-year classes. I think that we were looking for more offerings at one particular time to reach more of the student body. But there are quite a few, and we, all, all these courses are being taught by the faculty. And you'll notice at the bottom, we have a couple new, and a directional change that we're making now as well. But as far as the graphics, that, that's Mr. Jubel, and you see his work all the time, with the programs and all the great work he does with those things. The interesting thing for me up there is the full-year graphics three, they do most of our school calendars, anything that has to do. So it is, it is really a workstation in progress, and it's great. Video production, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, that's where they do the TV news, and I do believe the radio station that, that we, you can drive into and tune in and warn them to, to see what's going on. Then CAD One, CAD Two, Adobe, and digital photography, web design, that's all Mr. Morocco, and he's been with us for a while, and all semester classes, and continuations, semester one, two, but that doesn't always mean that the, the kid is going to follow that progress. They could do it the way they want in the schedule. I'm sure when you talk to Mrs. Teshia, she can go through a lot more of that in architectural drawing. But those courses have been offered for a while, and we have, you know, once we go on research and photos of what type of work they, they do. It's amazing when you see some of the work that these kids do, both in the arts and the technology area.
But who teaches the video production?
Mr. Jubel. We used to, we used to have more classes, as you know, Mr. Sullivan left us last year, so we revamped it and sort of like set a new direction as well, and that's where I'm headed, with the, the energy and robotics type courses. Those courses are more taught, we don't have the construction zones and all that stuff. These are more, as Ethan was talking earlier, we're headed to work more with the science department and the math departments, and they call it STEM, I guess, science, technology, engineering, and math. And though, these courses are going to begin to offer that. These are, these are entry-level courses at this particular stage with some great expectations. Someday, I hope, instead of us walking in, a robot can come in here and do this whole presentation for you, and I can sit back there and say, thank you very much, you know? We're not there yet, but that's the direction we're headed in. The challenges we have, and, and you know, to keep up with that technology, software and all this stuff, it is, it is a challenge, and thank God, this, this community is pretty dedicated to technology. Even last summer, we started, Shabat Hood, I started getting together and talking about how can we bring it to that next level of, of bringing all those things together? Any questions on any of that stuff?
Who's teaching the energy?
Oh, I'm going to go to that next slide, I hope we have the whole staff. Yeah, there we have it. So Christine and I are up, up there, John Morocco, Mark, and Bruno Nisiglia, I'd say it like that. He comes with us with a lot of experience, and let me get my notes on it, so I don't, I think he's been teaching engineering for sixteen years, he's been involved ten years with teaching the STEM area, and he, you know, he's kind of so, so good, you know? It's a transformation, and it was done over, we didn't have it in place when we left school, so we had to do it over this summertime, and thanks to Mrs. Sessia who did, and some amount of hard work to make sure all these schedules could work out and stuff like that. Because the, those technology courses now really, really do require math, science skills that have to be up to par to make it work. What I'd like to see in the future, if we could go back and find a course or two that can get back to the kids that need the hammer and nail, but that's, you know, I know we're developing this, I'm asking for both, best of both worlds, but I've been known to do that. I think we need to service all students. But that's, I think those are the things where, software is always a challenge, these new courses are bringing us up to, I, I think where we should be, with STEM, and then, once again, maybe we find a way to service the student that still needs a hammer and a nail, which could have been me at one point, so I guess that's what I stick up for.
So those students who had, I believe it was Mr. Sullivan, is that one of them? Do you see those students in robotics? Or do you see them?
That may be a question that you can deal with Mrs. Teshia at first. After working with Mr., with Bruno for the first couple of weeks, there was a transitional period where a person that was walking into that class, that maybe was assigned to that class... where a person that was walking into that class, that maybe was assigned to that class, didn't quite know what to expect, and then found out, wait a minute, you know, this isn't what I want. I think there was some transferring around, but I do believe that the class sizes are very nice, and they're going along rather than this. How, are we going to have robots running around by the end of this year? We're hoping so. They may not be as fast as they should be just yet, but we're working at that, and I think as long as we go in that direction, then next year we'll have a better program, and the year after that, we'll have a better program. And that's what I have to offer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There's got to be one person left.
I think you've got.
Oh, I've got all my pictures.
Got some samples.
Oh, there you go. Here's some samples. These are all from Christine's, the ceramics classes. Well, the one on the left is a drawing, and the ceramics. This is a drawing, believe it or not. If you look at that detail, these kids are coming from Blackstone Mobile folks. We didn't import these pictures or anything like that. Not a bad idea, but we, obviously, hands-on, creative side. Obviously, we have concerts, multi-left picture, as I look at it, is concert band, wind ensemble, here right on our stage, chorus members. These are all examples of student work, graphics. And then it's you. And I should mention that Bruno also teaches one science course already, I do believe, correct?
Yes, forensics.
So there's already that transitional period where we're looking to do both, and hopefully we can add on to the math department in the future as well, too.
Good evening, everyone. This is the science department, and here are the members. There are two, four, five, five of us, plus we're borrowing Mr. Rowe to teach physics, so he is in with the physics as well in our department. These are the course offerings that we have. We have the college prep lane, we have the advanced, and then honors, which we would like to see added a couple more courses along with the AP, and at this point, we only have one AP course, which is biology. But there is several things for everyone. There is a three-year requirement. They need to have three credits in science, so they will have, the first two years will usually be bio 1, bio 2, unless they go into honors bio, which is a one-year course before they take the MCAS as freshmen, and they do very well. We actually had 100% pass the MCAS. Proficient and advanced were about 86%. Needs improvement, 14% lower than last year, so we're making strides. We're getting there. We have a great increase in interest in chemistry with colleges requiring, especially four-year colleges requiring chemistry. We have seen a great increase in the chemistry classes. We have eight chemistry classes this year. Three CP, four advanced, and one advanced chemistry II class. And we would like to see an honors chemistry developed, as well as possibly an AP environmental science as well, to give a little variety there with the sciences. We have, again, with the CP, we have the environmental and forensics. That is a semester course. One semester, they take environmental, the other one, they take forensics or vice versa, and that seems to work out very well. Any questions on the courses? Some biology pitches, working in the lab, we're starting to increase our inquiry approach, and the students, again, need a little more help. Not everything is given, so they need to do a little more investigating, and it's a learning curve for both, all of us, as well as the students, but we are working on that. As I said, these are some of the biology classes. We also had a grant through Mass BioEd where we have biotechnology equipment, which we use throughout the year in all our biology courses, electrophoresis, micropipettes, things of that nature that help us do some of these specialized classes. So that is working out very nicely. Chemistry, again, there is an increase in doing demos. Mr. Slate has been doing demos, and then writing, having the students try to explain what happened. And this is to help them use their knowledge that they have, there's some sort of relationship with the demonstration versus what they have been learning, and they find it very interesting. They have been, have received this very, very well. We did a density of liquids, and that, the students had an interesting time with that, and tried a few different things, and this is the end product that they had. We are working and starting to develop or use some STEM activities, and that will be carried through throughout the year. We are also working towards developing Edmodo. All the science teachers will have an Edmodo account with their students by second quarter, and students will be able to get on. We will post things. We will get into a blog as well, so that is one of our goals for the department, to work on that. We all have SMART boards in our classrooms, and they've been wonderful, and I would say they are used on a daily basis. I don't think anyone doesn't use them on a daily basis, so that has been a very big help, and I think it's been very important for the students as well. At this point, we have 508 students taking science classes. It's about 85% of the population now are taking science courses. They go beyond just the three-year requirement. Some take every science course available to them, and they do fit it in by doubling up their junior and senior year, and we are very pleased with that, and it's very nice to be able to see a student two, three, even four years, you know, taking these courses. So that's been a definite bonus. We're very pleased to see that. Questions?
How many science teachers in your department?
There are five science teachers in the department. Mr. Rowe has two physics courses. What's Bruno's last name?
I call him Bruno.
Okay. Mr. Bruno has one of the forensics. Mr. Johnson has two classes, and the rest of us are either four or five classes. So we're kept fairly busy.
Does physics fall under math or science?
Pardon?
Does physics fall under math or science?
Yes.
It actually, it can go, it can go under both, but it is actually better if it goes into the math component.
Okay.
With the calculus and trigonometry that is needed. I think the students fare better if they have that piece.
Okay.
And Mr. Rowe has been doing it now, what, five, six years?
I think it's about seventh.
Seventh year in teaching physics. This year, we have two courses, and I'm tickled pink that there are enough of students in order to have two full classes like that. I think that's wonderful. So it's really very, very helpful for the students that are going on into some sort of science career. They really do need physics. We do push physics, chemistry, anatomy, and of course, the biologies, and if they can get into either honors or AP, you know, all the better, all the better for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the wellness PE department, and there's four members to our team. Ryan Gordy, Denise Morrell, Margaret Leany, and myself. Just a breakdown, it's a little bit different than some of the tracks you saw with the other departments. Students are required to take two years of wellness PE. Typically, it's grades nine and 10. Sometimes situations come up which a junior has to take it if their schedule doesn't allow for a freshman, and those are four-year courses. And basically, it's health and PE on a rotation. So you have six classes of health, six classes of PE, and it goes throughout the whole year. Electives that are offered if students wish to continue with our department. Students in grades nine through 12 have the option to take a semester course called foods and nutrition. They're getting some culinary skills with that. Juniors and seniors have the option to take advanced PE, which is a full-year course of just PE. And this year, we added a new course to our department. It's called leadership and sport management, which is also a full-year course. I'll talk a little bit more about that in the upcoming slides, but any questions on the general courses? So, in order to reduce the large number of study hall students and trying to give kids new opportunities, we came up with this course called leadership and sport management, and basically, it's a little bit more involved than your traditional typical PE class. Basically, it's come from the sport education model, and instructions carried out in a way which stimulates more of an athletic team, and you're looking at the whole team from all different aspects. Students will be both players, so participants like you would in a traditional PE class, but they'll also take on franchise administrator roles. What do I mean by that? Within each season, you'll have students acting as the team owner, a manager, a coach, the captain, statistician, publisher, and a referee. So the students really take the leadership roles with the different units, which we call seasons in this type of class. This class has taken off. The kids enjoy it. They've really stepped up and own the class. We've taken more of a backseat and allowed for them to really show their leadership. So this is our first-ever leadership in sports management class, and you can see the kind of colors. They've selected team names, they've selected team colors, and they're really into it. The Raptors, which is my favorite with the pink, through graphics and things like that, they actually came up with their own shirts and things like that. Some other shots from the other courses, I just wanted to share with you. This is an advanced PE. We do so a lot of lifetime activities, so this is a, hopefully a chip shot for Birdie, we're going to say, but we just finished up our golf unit as the weather was nice. We utilize the fitness center, so the students have six classes of PE before they go back to the classroom health. Two of those days, they're in the fitness room. So one-third of their PE time is dedicated to their individual workouts. So we assess the students' fitness levels three times a year. They create fitness goals. We work together, create fitness plans, and then they go in, kind of work out. So a couple of things, get some students on the cardio machines. One of our CP PE courses, right now, a new unit we added last year was disc units, we're working with frisbees. This is a game of ultimate frisbee, and actually, this is a shot taken by Mr. Dudak, who came in to do an observation. So I had asked him, I said, "Why are you here? Can you snap a few pictures?" And he got quite the action shot with the orange blur is actually the frisbee, and we've got a lot of student movement here, a great game. This is not a staged shot. One girl actually said, "Can we have a timeout? We need to huddle." So we captured that as well. So the kids do get involved. And then shifting gears a little bit to the foods classes, they're working in teams also. The class sizes max out at 16 for four kitchens that allow for four teams of four, and we have students who are working with the vegetable unit, they're preparing scalloped potatoes. And then, most recently, obviously, seasoning pumpkin bread, and to quote a few students, very yummy. And some staff members sometimes get delivered treats and things like that. So that's the end of that one. I have no pumpkin bread to share.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions at all?
I have just one concern about the leveling of classes, the CP, advanced, and honors, and I had the opportunity to do an EAS visit last year, and one of the standards is really, especially for the core classes, there'd be at least in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, a homogeneous class, so just an English 9, math 10, or, you know, algebra. But, because without, with those leveling that I see here, you won't even get to proficient.
I think we took a step in that direction this year with, Jeff, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we're trying a homogeneous group this year at the freshman level, and from there, we're going to kind of see how it goes. We're kind of the pilot program right now. Mr. Porter approached me last year and asked if that was something that we could do, so we said we'd take it on this year. And then Ethan and I just had a conversation about it yesterday in terms of how we think so we work in math. Right now, I'd say probably the freshman is the best way to do it, because they kind of get the fresh start, the new building, and then from there, we can kind of determine for ourselves perhaps where they need to go, so we're trying it this year and see how it progresses.
And I think as long as you're going in the right direction, because it's not something you can do the year before EAS shows up, you know, something that's going to take a couple of years to work in.
Correct, and it's going to take us, you know, we're starting to see some positives and we're starting to see some negatives, and perhaps how we need to reschedule things, but it's going to take a little while.
That was it for me. Well, thank you all for coming in and sharing what you're doing at the high school, and I know it's really important that we try to keep as many of our kids into the district, in the district as we can, so, and that comes a lot from what you're doing up there, so we appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all did a great job.
Moving on to the report of the subcommittee, strategic planning.
So strategic planning, we've got, we're almost there with the steering committee. I've got a couple more arms to twist, but I'm planning on, I'm going to try and have a meeting in the next, within the next week and a half. Just thinking about next week, but it might be tough with Halloween and people want to be out that night, so. The other thing, I do want to see if we can get maybe some candidates from the junior class, Ms. Shaverhood, would be good to add to that, because I'd like to have a junior in place who can pass the baton to a junior next year, and we continue to have at least one student who's represented on that team as well. But we've got a good cross-section. We've got a teacher, a number of community members, so, almost there.
If possible, do you think it's worth getting like sophomore and junior, and that way they'll have the opportunity to do it for a couple of years?
That might be, yeah, that might be good. Might be good to have a couple of students on there. So if there's a couple of students you could think of, we can see if we can get them involved.
Policy. We were going to meet next week on Monday to start working on the Section 4 school committee operations, but I think we might have to postpone that a little bit, just give Ms. Eldridge some time to catch up with us, so.
Was that the 29th on school policy?
Yeah, yeah. We'll cancel that and maybe schedule it after the first of the year. Regional agreement? I guess you guys have been busy working and...
We met with Ms. Shaverhood last week. I feel like it was two weeks ago. Last week, and we went over our agreement, and we're looking at other agreements, and we're creating a questionnaire to try and get the community and the parents involved in some of the things that we discussed, so that's where we're at right now.
Legislative, Mr. Buckley.
Nothing new to report in the legislature. They're all busy running for reelection, so that's a good thing. That means they're not victimizing and harassing the local communities, so we...
They're not messing anything up?
Uh-huh.
They're not messing anything up?
Right. They're in informal session, and I don't really think anything adverse to us at this point.
Yeah.
Nice to know. Facilities. Anything to report from facilities?
I believe we did hire the facilities manager, and he will be starting in the district October 29th. I'm sure we'll have him come visit once he's on board and...
And communications, Mr. Buckley.
Well, in terms of the superintendent, because I think you probably have an update with the Blackstone Cable, and you say, and I could probably add to it, so.
Okay, I will. We visited the selectmen. Mrs. Robin, Mrs. Greenstein, Mr. Tringali, we were there. They are doing... They are doing some research about the proposed agreement as far as what is in the agreement, what will come to the committee, programming. And so we will be asking some questions when they meet us on the 29th. Part of what we are looking at is the amount of programming, six days a week, seventy-five percent, and cannot be repeated by seventy-five percent, and so we're trying to make sure that we contribute enough programming to help get to the third channel.
Mr. Buckley?
And just as a follow-up, I'm told that the, these meetings have been brought to Millville, and Tim is putting them up on the Millville cable, and they're, I think, the top-rated show on the cable vision of Millville. It's a good thing, though, but there was, there's been some good feedback about the programs that's been there. The YouTube channel has been expanded. I think we have, what, forty-five or so episodes up there right now and more, so look at the BMR, BMR Education channel. And we're hopeful that we can finally get the live feed put in place here in the middle schools, so we can do this live as well as be able to originate programs from here. It's rather disappointing that we have to, the bureaucracy we seem to have to be able to go through in the town of Blackstone seems to be rather difficult and unfortunate, given the fact that it's really to benefit the children of both towns.
Well, I think it just benefits the children. I think it brings the community together as a whole. Is there any, there's been a lot of comments about the sound quality when it gets to Blackstone?
Which is an ironic thing, because the same DVD that gets sent to Millville works fine.
I do want to see that, yeah.
So I'm not quite sure, maybe it's, maybe the Blackstone equipment is faulty, but once again, if we could originate here, we could just eliminate that issue.
Have those issues been brought up since we've gotten the new equipment, or that was previous?
No, it seems like that regardless of what we send down there, it seems to have some audio issues, but like I said, virtually the same copy is brought to Millville, and it operates fine. So I wonder where the problem is.
Are the Blackstone Selectmen meetings live?
They are.
Are they broadcast? Okay. And are we still looking into being live in Millville?
Well, we, that's a little bit more of a hurdle to cross because of the disconnected, you know, systems. So we have to kind of come up with some other scheme. It may be somewhat delayed in Millville, but we may improve the delivery by, you know, actually moving the data right to Millville, you know, directly.
There's live shows done at the high school, though. Is that something that...
Well, the high school allegedly has the ability to operate or to originate. I'm not sure what the situation is. Once again, it's, our meetings are here, so it would be here, but when we would go in dark, we could bring up the high school so that they can produce and display too, but that's...
So besides our meetings, are any of the videos being played in Blackstone?
Can we start sending stuff over?
We do.
Yeah, and it, but they're not being played.
We, if I could speak to that, we've checked out all of our equipment. None of our equipment appears to be faulty, and so we're not, we do not think that the malfunction for the sound is on our end, especially since it plays in Millville. So we've brought that to their attention, and we're hoping that they can figure out where the problem exists.
And I do want to say that, not that I have a lot of time to watch TV, but the channel that Millville has dedicated to us is fabulous. I mean, and there is a running TV guide, you know, you can see when the football game is coming on, or when our meeting is coming on, or, I mean, it's very informative to the community. And I mean, I've watched several different parts of different things, and it, I mean, it's great footage. It's definitely a good way to get out to the community, so. I hope that Blackstone can catch up to that quickly.
When are we meeting with them again?
Twenty-ninth.
And they're coming back, if I understand correctly, they're coming back with seeing what their contract with Comcast is in terms of a Channel Three or something like that, so that, you know, we can go forward like Millville.
And also, Mr. Johnson had that nice little video of the fall overview of sports. That would be nice to send out.
Put onto YouTube and to the Tens.
That's already on YouTube, though.
Yeah, actually, it's already on YouTube last night.
Really? We didn't get the first preview?
No, you didn't.
It was on Facebook, actually, there.
Was it?
And I believe we, and also our, we put out something, the demo for the eighth graders and things like that.
We did. That was very nice. And the bonfire's also up.
Oh, good. That could, that could feedback. When I cross-posted it from Jack Carroll, I thought it was a very good job, so.
Okay, let's finish the reports of the subcommittees, the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. First on the business, I would be asking the committee to make a motion to create a cheerleader revolving account. We did a revolving account for football. This is the similar type of an account, so I would ask the committee to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second? Motion made by Mrs. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., don't leave her hanging. Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion?
Or do they have any money to put into it?
That's next.
No, okay, so I assume that some, like, parents or something, they raised some money?
They did. Last year, there was a fund, there were several fundraising activities, and at that time, there was not a mechanism in place to accept the money. It was held by a parent, so we've asked for the parent to please present the checks she has, and after you, after we have the account, then I will be asking the committee to accept a total of $540 from the fundraiser, and there are future fundraisers planned. That money will be given to the school and be placed in that account. The purpose of that money is to purchase cheerleading uniforms. This year, we have twenty-eight girls on the cheerleading squad. We do not have twenty-eight outfits, uniforms, I'm sorry, uniforms. So we will be looking at purchasing...
And do we anticipate now with the addition of football that they will be more active and, I don't know, will it be the same squad that goes football versus basketball?
Well, that would be something that we would need to discuss as a committee, because right now, cheerleading is a winter sport. If we're going to have them involved with cheerleading, the fall sports, we would need to then roll it to fall as well. That would affect our timetable for tryouts, et cetera, as well as coaching, so that would be a future discussion.
And we did have some discussions about athletic boosters in general.
That was gonna be my question.
How is that going to work in with, I don't think we've come to a decision or...
That was gonna be my question. How, for the people at home, how does that relate to the boosters and vice versa? How do they interact?
Well, actually, I've asked Mr. Johnson to please start looking into this. We have various booster organizations for various sports. What we're looking at doing is to create a centralized committee, more like a board of directors, where each representative from each sport would send a representative to sit, have conversations, what's going on, how can we help one another, how do we work one another, but yet still have that independence with the individual boosters. We're in the process, in fact, in the next couple of weeks, after fall sports have come down before winter has started, Mr. Johnson will have some free time, and we'll be inviting people to the table to begin this discussion. Mrs. Powers, you will be invited.
I know, I've already been called.
Good, thank you. So going back, though, if we could do the cheerleading.
We've had the motion and the second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Okay, next, I would ask you to please accept the two checks. Mrs. Wanda Fisher was the parent who has been instrumental in the fundraising for our cheerleaders. She continues to help with that, and she was the one that was gracious enough to present us with the checks.
And can we thank her for that, too?
We will.
I've been looking for a motion to accept those checks.
I make a motion to accept the checks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
At least you call those opposed.
I know, well, you know, we like to move things along here.
Idiot.
Next, what I, I would request the committee to authorize a letter to be written to the Educators Association, inviting them to the table to begin, to set dates, to discuss entering into negotiations.
So we'd be looking for a motion, but we were talking about just asking them to enter into negotiations without specific collaborative or...
We'd be looking at collaborative.
Okay, all right. I'd be looking for a motion.
I like that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Tringali. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this will be a collaborative approach, and the letter will say as such.
Yes.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
When are we looking, maybe, are we looking before the first of the year or after the first of the year?
You know, we'll look to see a date in December. November's pretty well taken. If we can find a date in December, we certainly will target that date. If not, it will be right at the first of the year.
We want to get the training, I'm sure there's a training component, maybe continue that before the holidays. Maybe, maybe hit the ground running in January. And just so the, so the public will know that I and myself, and I believe Mr. Faulkner will not be able to participate due to our alleged conflict.
The next is the orange paper. These are the motions that need to be made and approved that will provide the money for the upcoming MSBA funds that we are going to front, load until the actual borrowing takes place. I would be asking that there are three motions, and that each motion needs to be made and then approved for this to occur.
Okay, anyone want to tackle that first motion?
I moved it to $75,000, which was appropriated from the district excess and deficiency account by vote of the committee on June 21st, 2012, for the purposes of paying the cost of the feasibility study schematic design phase for the replacement of the roof and any pertinent components at the regional high school, including all costs incidental and related thereto, be transferred to account number 0105-505-340-7200-45180, roof replacement at regional high school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Buckley, seconded by Mrs. Greenstein. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Second motion, somebody want to tackle that one? Mr. Tringali?
I moved that to $60,000, which was appropriated from the district's excess and deficiency fund by vote of the committee on June 21st, 2012, for the purpose of paying the cost of the feasibility study schematic design phase for the replacement of the roof and its pertinent components to JFK Elementary School, including all costs incidental and related thereto, be transferred to account number 0105-008-340-7200-45180, roof replacement at JFK Elementary School.
Motion made by Mr. Tringali. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vanaco. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion number three. Mr. Faulkner?
Motion number three, I moved it to $60,000 and, $60,000, which was appropriated from the district excess and deficiency fund by vote of the committee on June 21st, 2012, for the purpose of paying the cost of the feasibility study slash schematic design phase for the replacement of the roof and its pertinent components at the AFM Elementary School, including all costs incidental and related thereto, be transferred to account number 0105-015-340-7200-45180, roof replacement at AFM Elementary School.
Motion made by Mr. Faulkner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vanaco. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. Next, I placed in your packets the Washington DC proposal. Provides an overview, the timeline, what they will visit, and Mr. Cameron has been working diligently on putting this package together. And I'm not surprised that we first started out with about a thousand-dollar cost. It's now down to $549 per student. They did have to go from flying to the bus, but when you look at what they're going to do, it's the same format. Does not compromise security, it does not compromise safety or the quality of the hotel. So at this point, this is the package that will be presented, and if we need to have a motion from the committee to accept it, we certainly would put it on the agenda, but we would ask for your blessing so we can get started as we need to roll this out to the students and parents, so we can begin fundraising and looking at payments.
But our next meeting is November 8th, and he said he's gonna have a presentation, or is this early November? Do we need to approve this before he can present it? Before he can pitch it to the parents?
I would ask that you, it's not on the agenda. If we don't have an issue with that, then I would ask that we have an approval. If you would like, we can always put it on the agenda, but not until November 8th.
Probably should do that, I would think.
Well, you could take a vote to, it's the intention of the committee to support it, deny it, and then we can formally adopt it, you know, whatever, but obviously, it would be beneficial and probably appropriate to, you know, go on record as that there's support for it, if people get, you know, if there are any objections, they probably should be ready to save it, so.
I did notice goal of 5,000 available for scholarship money for families. Where is that scholarship money coming from?
Part of this will be fundraisers, and certainly will work very hard to make sure any student that would like to attend has the opportunity to attend regardless of funds.
So the free and reduced lunch students, for example, would be given consideration?
Absolutely.
And this is taking place at the end of the year?
Yes, yes.
Is this something, obviously, they're gonna be looking for the chaperones, and are they going to open this up to families that aren't selected as chaperones that want to travel with the student, or?
I'm not sure about that. I do not believe so. It's just a, it's the school plus chaperone.
But is it, is it something they could look into, like, price-wise, if...
Sure. And I would ask him to, if that's a possibility. The other piece is they've, he's done a sampling of faculty, and it certainly looks like we have faculty on board that would, will accompany the trip.
I would think that's where they look first. Is that what your question was? Who was the chaperone? I didn't understand your question.
I guess it's more price-wise, wondering if that price will be available to parents that might want to go, that aren't selected as a chaperone, or that just want to participate.
Okay, is there a motion? Can I get a motion from the committee about whether you would like to, it's our intention to support this, and maybe for the purpose of actually approving it at the next meeting?
I'll make that motion, too. Propose the...
Okay. Just to show the intent, and that way he can get started on, okay, so motion by...
Yeah, the Washington DC eighth grade proposal, I make a motion that we accept.
Motion made by Mrs. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion?
Could Mr. Cameron come to a meeting on the 8th? And not just for our benefit, but for people at home, they could?
Right.
Present this?
I have a concern about the, it being an end of the year. I mean, obviously that can't change, but if it continues being an end of the year, last couple weeks of school type of field trip, and/or if it's a curriculum-oriented trip, would it be more beneficial to move it up versus the last couple weeks of school when the kids are at the end? That's a concern that I have, just looking at the dates and the curriculum that he has in here.
Just to talk to that a little bit, in the past, the Millville sixth grade trip was about then. It was usually the week after Memorial Day. And around that same area, like through Saturday or so. Because it really was positioned to be after MCAS.
Right.
So if we start backing into May, I think we have problems with that.
Right.
The other thing is when Justin came in before, obviously, this is a, for life of better, this is a reward system, this is a goal for the eighth graders. Obviously, if there's, you know, if there's problems during the school year, a child could wind up not being able to go, so it's, I think it's important that we also kind of take those into consideration, and, you know, with all due respect to as far as the being curriculum and stuff, I would think that, you know, this is far better to see them go with this than, I think typically we do a Six Flags.
Oh, definitely. That's not my question. My concern was actually the last two weeks of school. Having it after Memorial Day is different than having it the last couple weeks, or the last, I mean.
Well, the 15th is probably, what, a week of, about a week later than what Millville used to be. I think we almost.
And I'd like to see if there is, what kind of restrictions, Mr. Buckley mentioned, because, and that's certainly, if this is done as a reward, a reward?
Well, I didn't, I didn't use the word reward. I used it as that this is a goal, and that they know that this is an end-of-the-year opportunity, you know, that certainly behavioral issues and so forth will come into play.
And they'd have to be clearly outlined early on.
And that's what I'd like to see, if there's going to be restrictions on that. If there's going to be restrictions on that. I know years ago, there was, there was a eighth grade field trip, and if the kids didn't do their homework, they didn't get to go, which I thought was a little, you know, it was.
Educational, like this is a really great field trip.
What was a class trip, and when you start to exclude 30% of the class, that, that's an issue with me, so.
I thought with all curriculum-based activities that are tied to the curriculum, that, I mean, the big picture, you're holding them back from the curriculum. So is it, behavior is a behavior, and deal with that, but it's not like a reward punishment type setting, or, I mean, that's what it seems like it's turned into.
I'd just like that clarified, if that's the intent. We don't even know, I don't know if that's the intent.
And I think I would also speak to the fact that this is something that Mr. Cameron has, is attempting to put in for this year, and because of that, some of the dates are very limited. And the other aspect is the cost, because it's extremely reasonable, as far as when we look at what it could have been, that also factored into some of the choosing of the dates, and we wanted to make this extremely affordable for families, and this is, this is the price, and this is kind of the timeline that we came up with. Moving ahead, I think it will be much easier to take some of the other aspects into consideration.
When is the last day of school? For, as it stands now, no snow days.
Don't say that yet.
But I mean, what do we?
It's Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it's the, I want to say the 20th.
Twenty-something, okay.
Yeah. It blurs together, you know.
Yeah, I know.
And is this taking the place of Six Flags?
Yes.
This is?
They will not.
They will not be doing both?
No.
And then maybe if we could find out, it doesn't need to be, you know, set in stone right now, but what would the students who did not get to go be doing? Can we, can we make sure that they're doing something that, obviously, it's not the Washington DC trip, but maybe it's as enjoyable and as educational?
Sounds like they'll be doing homework.
You know, that hardly seems fair. All right. So we have a motion on the table by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Faulkner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. You have with clips, the CPR packet, we just received this today. This is the Coordinated Program Review from the Special Ed Department that began last year and ended up in the final, now we're in the action plan development. It's on, I believe it's online, it's a public document for, it's posted on the DESC, and we did very, very well.
So now, is this something that comes out? We have the ability to comment, and so this is the final version?
This is, and now we will be responding to what our action plan is, and quite honestly, I think after you read this, this is probably the best review that the district has ever received. So we certainly thank Dr. Hawey for his effort and all the staff that supported that. Also in your packet, you'll find the monthly review. I changed the format a little bit on you, so if you could look at it, if it flows for you, that's great. If not, please let me know. And I really did this with a, with a method to my madness. It's on a Google Doc, and the one reason why I wanted it on a Google Doc is because I'd like the other administrators to see what's going on in the other buildings, and this was one way that I was able to do this. Certainly open to suggestions if there are other questions that I did not include that you would like to see, but I think it's very important that, that our administrative team has an appreciation of what their fellow administrators are accomplishing. And so I came up with this format. Please let me know, I'd be happy to have your feedback and input. Finally, you will have in your packet, two proposed calendars for FY13, FY14, and we're looking at this a little bit differently this year, and this will be on our December meeting, because we're going to start having a little bit of conversations with people about this. Plan, there are two options. The first option looks at school that would begin on September 5th for students. On September 3rd would be orientation day for staff. On September 4th would be a professional day. That gives up one of the professional days during the school year. And this year, what we, what we found is the orientation day was very congested with everything that we needed to accomplish. It left very little time for any kind of extra professional development to occur for our faculty and staff. This would take care of it. The next planned orientation day would be on the 3rd, and school is on the 4th. So we're going to be having some dialogues with people about, about the workability of the two options, and then we will come back to the committee with a recommendation for your approval.
Do we count the days?
We did, many times, but you know how that goes.
And Kim, is the orientation day for staff a full day?
It is.
Okay.
It is. And the reason we don't start before Labor Day?
Contractually.
Is the contract.
September 1, yeah.
Actually, that's the date, September 1, so as we're got us aware, Labor Day falls, but it's either the week, it can't be before 1.
Because actually, sometimes it is before Labor Day. It's just, the reason we don't start that last week of August, when?
Everyone else starts, yeah.
When most of the surrounding towns.
Not everyone, yeah.
When did you start this year?
Oh, I started before, but that's not, not everyone.
We always have.
Yeah, we always have.
There's north.
Yeah, we get like a full weekend before Labor Day.
The other, the other piece that I would point out would be the December, the holiday vacation. We're going to, we would be proposing to start it on the 20th. That's a Friday. It has to be a half-day because of contractual obligations to the educators. And it, it did not seem to make much sense to bring kids in on that, the 23rd for a half-day, heat the buildings, et cetera, and then send them home, and certainly did not make any sense to us to have a half-day on the 24th. That put us out to June 23rd for the last half-day, which is a Monday. So we started working on this. When this comes to you the next time, it will also include back-to-school nights, parent-teacher conference information, as well as summer information, so we will have it out for parents as they start to plan their summer events.
And is the, the parent-teacher conferences, I know there's been a lot of pilot programs with them, is that kind of set where we think we like the way it's working and?
Actually, we're coming up on November 15th, is a half-student day, the other half is parent-teacher conferences, and then throughout that week, there'll be the evening parent-teacher conferences. We'll be making notifications to parents, and actually, that's an agenda item on my administrator's meeting next week, is how are we going to roll this out? How are we going to make the notification, and what are our plans? Because we do need to get that out for people. And finally, it appears we have, we've almost come to the point where we will be signing the MSBA contract for our architect. Once that's signed, we will start the roof testing on both, on the high school and the complex. That brings us closer, our, we have every intention of being ready to present the information to MSBA for their January meeting for the approval, and then we'll be moving forward asking for funding. And that completes my report.
All right. I lost my agenda. I think we're up to?
Done.
Public forum. Public forum. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak?
Always.
State it, I haven't looked at it.
State it all down.
All right. So I have two quick topics. Bill Chow from Kimbley Lane. During the high school presentation, I wanted to ask, but I didn't want to interrupt, it could be out of turn, does a student have the ability to cross those lanes, or are they stuck in their college prep? Can they, if someone's really doing well in one area, whatever the subject is, can they move across those lanes and at least start in a college prep and end in an advanced in a subject?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The other thing, I know in September, I spoke about how at the middle school and the elementary level, I mean, tonight, the presentation to high school really kind of solidifies the fact of, it's really, it's really a wonderful thing that is happening throughout the district in terms of the information that's coming out, and that's available. I particularly like the Kim and Mike update show. I'm looking forward to November, and I think.
Maybe play your cards, or we'll have you as a guest.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, right. And the, I think always, it's a good equation where you have, you're flooded with information. The eighth grade, the eighth grade film around introducing the high school was outstanding. And I think when you have good information, it's always going to lead to good decisions, you know, and I think that would pay off during budget season, you know. So I was in the budget, you know. So I appreciate the budget being up online, because I know I've been passionate about it, but I also think that the budget that's online is probably the equivalent of the Mike and Kim show being in a foreign language, you know, because it, it, it's, I can follow, but it's hard for Joe Public to follow that. So my hope is, I think, once, before we get to budget season, we can have a much clearer, I do think the same, the same thing happens. When people have good information, good decisions are going to be made, because from what I'm hearing, you know, we really have to have a plan about technology and getting, getting things in place without the sticker shock of something happening, or a field, or a scoreboard or something. So I do think the more information that's out there, the easier it's going to be, and I think the more information we get about the budget out there, running by line, we wouldn't, at the public hearing, would need to hear, well, we can't show you all Thousand Lines. You could say, listen, you've seen the Thousand Lines, they've been up there for six months, you know. I think that's going to pay off. So that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I don't think it's necessarily just the transparency, but the trying to bring the community in, and having less, a seamless line between the school and the community to. Committee forum, Mr. Tringali?
Say, Mrs. Greenstein and I, again, were at the bonfire on Monday night, and that was just, congratulations, Mr. Dudeck, I understand that was his, his project, and I thought that came off fabulously for the first time out. A lot of little kids there, older people, people from the community, alumni, it was just great, and obviously, you can see that thing can just take off. Maybe we can do it again in the spring, and, you know, twice a year, fall and spring every year, but that was just fabulous, and again, congratulations, Mr. Dudeck, I thought it turned out really, really well.
I just have something quick that I would like to pass out to all of you. I'm on the playground committee for the Millville Elementary Building, and we just have a quick survey, and they're looking for opinions from all different angles of the community. We've gone to the police chief, we've gone to the selectman, we've gone to other community members, just asking opinions on, should we have a playground? Where do you think it should be? And what you'd like to see there? So if you want to take the time to do it, then you can either mail it back, the, to Millville, or if you want to give it back to me at the next meeting, then I would be glad.
It's not electronic?
No, it is not.
Low-tech.
Yes, but I'll get this to each of you.
Look at that poor tree that gave its life to print that.
Do you have enough copies now for us, everyone?
I do.
Okay.
So, it's quick.
Excellent. Thank you. Have you decided on a, on a place?
We have two locations. Actually, I got an email today saying we're looking at a third, because we found out that there may be some septic issues, or where we may have been looking, or clearance for a fire truck. And we, they met yesterday with one company, I already gave you, and we're meeting tomorrow with another one that's just coming out to the site, just to give us an idea of how much clearance we need and price. And we're looking into several grants, too, so.
And not to throw cold water on this, because I think that's a wonderful idea, but I'm concerned about a couple of things.
Okay.
Liability, and management of the equipment.
Right. We've definitely talked about that, and having, after the grants and all the fundraising are complete, and having a specified part of the MSBA budget designated to it each year for upkeep, so.
Because I know at.
It's just conversation right now, there's.
There was some issues around, that's not the original playground at JFK.
Right.
That was, it was a rather large contraption that was built out of.
Chip thing, yeah.
Tires.
Tires.
I like the tires.
And that became a very bone of contention with, with the committee, because we were kind of saddled with maintaining that, you know, that the bolts would come undone, and equipment and so forth, so we, you know, there was some maintenance there. So we just want to make sure, in fact, I believe that the group that put the present one in kind of worked, you know, with the specs and, you know, the type of rock underneath it and so forth, that was another thing, I think it was, I think there was like mulch under there at that time, and.
No, the peystone, wasn't the peystone?
There wasn't peystone, but there was, it was a word for it. It was rice stone.
It was called, it goes wherever the kids go.
Yeah. So the Rice Stone became, became the Rice Stone Elementary School. So I just want to, and I know several years ago, there was a organization, the MSBA actually was trying to build a, or get something going up there, and I believe that there was, it was an issue about size, and which kids got to use it, and it really come down to it. So I just, just want to question you, I hope you could pull this off, but I just want to make sure that Millville's involved, and I think the, certainly the principle there, really the, you know, the defining thing where it winds up landing and so forth, and I'm sure the other thing, not only you have to worry about the septic, is you have to worry about our friend ledge, but just kind of give me the history of it.
You also mentioned liability. What's the concern there with?
Well, I mean, if we didn't put it up, are we liable if something happens to a kid on it? You know, I just want to make sure that, you know, all our Ts are crossed and our Is dotted.
I don't think necessarily during the school hours, but after hours, I think is probably a bigger concern if. probably a bigger concern, if it's open to the public and--
Well, do you know how-- I know that simultaneously with this survey, we had another part of the committee looking in, or actually trying to communicate with the group that may have put in the playground that is at the complex now. But are we liable over there? Because, I mean, that one's open to the public, 24/7.
Wide open, yeah.
There's not, I mean, we've talked about a fence, we've talked about lighting.
Yeah, I think you have to, yeah, we probably have to look and see what we have for insurance there.
Right.
And that's also the town of Blackstone's land.
Right.
You know, that's, but--
And Millville is Millville.
The district is still in Millville's land, but still, they lease it to the district. So there's kind of both hands. Mr. Bebo's organization is the one that, from--
I do believe there was someone that was communicating with them.
I think, too, the complex is set out so you can see.
Right.
And there's neighbors around that can, you know, certainly if there's something going on, you have a better view of it. Whereas Millville's really tucked behind there that--
Very remote backup there.
You might not see what was going on after. I think we certainly can handle it. I think, I was surprised you guys didn't have a playground.
Well, to be honest with you, we did some research, and we are the only elementary school within a 20-mile radius, with the exception of one private school in Rhode Island that does not have a playground.
I was shocked. I, yeah, I was really shocked.
We're, you know, we're feeling left out.
Oh, I think that's true.
Mr. Faulkner?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Greenstein?
I really enjoyed the bonfire as well. I have to give it up to the administrative team at the high school. I think they did a great job. It was nice to see all different people there. And I do see that being something that could be definitely community-wide, and could be big and definitely successful. So I just want to thank them for that. I have asked in the past for a curriculum update in the packets, and I really like looking at this Google Doc, but I'm not comfortable with the list from curriculum. So if we could just get a more of, something more cohesive, like the Millville one, or any of the other ones that said, you know, the number of walkthroughs, that's what I, that's what my focus is, because I know we had this discussion sitting here, and I'm still looking for, to see if there's been an improvement in what is actually going on throughout the three schools. So I think I would like to see more of that versus a list. Thanks.
Mr. Buckley?
A couple of things. First of all, congratulations also to the soccer having the first night game. That was, and to the chief of police for his arrangements for the lights. That's a great thing. And I noticed on my way in here this evening that the middle school is hosting an auction, I think the second Friday of November. So that's a good thing. So I hope you'll, you know, people will attend that and participate with that for the hot net PTO. I also noticed on the, on the warrants, a bill for legal services, a 6K. I assume this is for the SMS, MSBA. I'm just a little concerned about that, that we maybe need to talk to Attorney Gould as far as like, are we ready? Are we, I know you covered this in your report, but I just want to reemphasize it, that are we ready to, you know, we're not, we're not holding MSBA back at all, and we're meeting all the obligations and the timelines for that. And I'd really like to, maybe the committee needs to, at a workshop or something, kind of go over some of those things, just to understand that. And then also, when you're talking to the district council, maybe an update on any other pending litigation. It's, we haven't heard from him in a while on that. And I think there are a few items that are still out there.
Anything else?
No, that'll do it.
I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Buckley. And John and I had talked about that it was time to bring Mr. Gould in to kind of see where everything was at, especially we have some new members here who have never been brought up to date with some of that stuff. And at that time, we can probably, you know, see where we're going, where we see ourselves in the future, because we do have quite a few things coming up, so. And I think the superintendent was looking to get a budget workshop. And when would you like to have that?
If possible, the 29th or 30th of October.
So next--
Next week.
Monday or Tuesday?
The Board of Selectmen meeting in Blackstone, or--
It's on the 29th of--
November.
October. Next week.
Next week.
The 29th should be open for everyone, because we're canceling the policy subcommittee, so.
Want to do the 29th?
If that works for people, I'd really like to be able to sit and have a--
Yeah, we can prepare it, get the buckets in place for when the roof starts to leak.
Yeah, that's true.
Can we start six?
Sure. I work in the valley now.
We might have--
Well, maybe, I shouldn't say that. My colleague, Mr. Faulkner, I don't know how that messes him up.
Cool.
Six? I could get here by six.
Okay. Because I think we might have a couple of things on there that, you know, we might want to take some time.
We can meet at the high school in my area.
All right, that's further from me. It might be 6:02 then.
6:01 and a half.
We'll start without you. You'll join in. Is there anything else that we'd like to? Everyone's good? I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mrs. Greenstein, seconded by Mrs. Venaco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What if that was a may? Then they could stay.
The motion to adjourn is not debatable, so.